Oh, is it today's? Yeah. Yeah, look at you. Wonder I talked to you, man. He was up. This guy doesn't want to be out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm still here for you.
Oh, my God.
This guy doesn't want to be out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm still here for you.
I don't know.
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 So it just happened that this night?
It all happened when he died.
And then when I came.
They all have their own reasons.
You like to be in the middle.
Yeah, I understand.
You got to be in the middle.
We're in the right.
We're in the right.
Maybe I tell you more.
I can't get quiet.
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 Understand, understand. Just do it, Tony, understand.
Teddy, you have the finished.
No, I want to give a very deep and powerful.
Well, Teddy's got.
Um.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
I'm so excited. 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 I'm so excited.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
I'm so excited. I'm so excited. I'm so excited. I'm so excited.
Oh, my God.
I'm so excited. 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 Sorry, sorry. Not only you, but them. Unless you really just make this. Yeah, he doesn't always show up. See. Yeah. Now that I know something, it's gonna be as much as possible. Yeah. 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 Now that I know something, it's gonna be as much as possible. Yeah. 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 Oh, boy. It's so glorious. Yeah. 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 No, I saw it. I think you. I can't excuse these guys when they think I'm famous. Yeah, on stage. Yeah. 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 Event, yes, indeed. So much, I appreciate it. Um, you're gonna do the minutes today, right? I will, yes, yes. You can remember, I remember. No, you can add whatever you want. Sure. Enough to get something. I didn't think of anything. Sure, sure. I got the minutes, yep. I will. I just said I tried going out to get sandwiches in my neighborhood. Yes. I had forty-five minutes. I just said. Sure, sure. Oh, my God. Don't do that. Oh, my God. Don't do that. Oh, my God. I know, I know, but. Well, that's what it is. You'll never get a hundred and fifty in the title. But you, you know what, though? Senior literature can do that. Obviously, get that out of the way. You know what I mean? Not like you just go and print something. I was trying to use it to meet. Well, you can if you pass out a leaflet of them, you know? I did my best. Sure. See what I mean? Oh, you're so cute. Good for you.
Yeah, that was my other question. Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of, you know, what would qualify, I mean, compared to us? Yeah. To me, compared to flirt here, you know? Yeah. What's happening? In my life, it's a bit weird. Thank you. 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 Yeah, that was my other question. Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of, you know, what would qualify, I mean, compared to us? Yeah. To me, compared to flirt here, you know? Yeah. Uh. What's happening? In my life, it's a bit weird. 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 Thank you. 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 Meeting called to order. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today, as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, and a God invisible, omnipotent, and just as for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yep.
Counsel Getchea.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Present.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel New.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any memorials today? Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chambers for Marguerite Hogan, loving wife, mother, grandmother, sister. Marguerite Florence Hogan, a Drakehead resident for the last several years, passed away surrounded by her loving family on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Brigham Women's Hospital in Boston. She was the beloved wife of Ernest T. Hogan, with whom she shared fifty-two years of marriage. Born in Lowell on November eighteenth, nineteen forty-six, she was the daughter of the late John F. and Agnes Florence. She was a graduate of Keith Academy High School, class of nineteen sixty-four. Marguerite was a longtime resident of the Savile Section of Lowell and a lifelong communicant of Saint Michael's Church. For many years, she ran the Saint Michael's School Lunch Program, making sure that every student received a healthy lunch and a warm smile, and that no student ever went hungry. She enjoyed watching her grandkids play sports, vacationing in Maine and Florida, and the occasional trip to the casino with Ernie, Dick, and Vern. Her greatest joy was being nana to her six, eleven grandchildren, Megan, Emma, Kylie, Riley, Brady Hogan, and Grace McCauley. In addition to her husband, Ernie, and her grandchildren, she leaves three children, Kristen Hogan and her fiancee, Richard McCauley, E. Timothy Hogan and his longtime girlfriend, Christine Jobert, all of Tinsborough, and J. Ryan Hogan and his wife, Beth McNamara of Pell, New Hampshire. Four siblings, John Florence Junior and his wife Catherine of Lowell, Richard Florence and his wife Kipper of Bridgewater, William Florence and his wife Christine of Lowell, and Mary Moran and her longtime boyfriend, Scott Wolosnawkowski of Seerup, New Hampshire, and also several other nieces and nephews. She also leaves her dear friends, Bernadette Richard Poria of Lowell. She was predeceased by her brother-in-law, Philip W. Moran Junior. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Moes here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to my dear friend, Gail Milliaris Golick, beloved wife of thirty-two years to Henry E. Hank Golick, who survives her. Born in Lowell, she attended Edison College in Beverly, where she received her associate's degree. After graduating from Endicott College in nineteen seventy-one, she played tennis at Vespa Country Club and skied at Loon and Waterville Valley. Prior to her retirement, Gail was a director for the Office of Employment and Training for the City of Lowell. In addition, she was a licensed real estate agent with Dick Lepine Real Estate for many years. To Gail, life was one endless conversation. She loved to talk, as we all knew. That's what made her unique. Gail loved to bake and cook, of which she was famous for her chocolate chip cookies, spanakopita, and her famous soup. I can't pronounce that, so I'll just say her famous soup. Gail was active in Drakehead politics and modeling every year as part of Milliaris clothing, her family's celebrated clothier. Gail was formally married to Peter Richardson, and together they had a son, Joshua. For the past sixteen years, Gail's most meaningful job was being a ya-ya to her grandson, Sergio. Besides her husband Hank, Gail is survived by her son, Joshua Lee Richardson, and his wife Nicole, her grandson Sergio David Richardson, her two brothers, Judge Milliaris and his wife Iris of Drakehead and Victor Milliaris. Gail's lively presence and zest for life will be sorely missed by her family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also want to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
And any other memorials? Moment of silence? Here none. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light for a moment of silence and dock in chamber. I'd like to welcome everyone to the participating in meeting in the chamber tonight, and also welcome everyone who's watching this meeting at home. We will start the meeting tonight with the mayor's business. Need, this is one of my favorite part of the meeting, is to recognize outstanding citizens in our community who have done wonderful things. And tonight, it has been a hell of a surprise, but I have to announce the person's name now, so that way we can present the citation to the person. So tonight, we are honoring Kathy Keen.
(APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, you want to do the citation first, or would you like to go first?
I have something I'd like to read first, please.
Okay, sure. If I could ask Kathy, please to come to the podium. We've been working, Counsel Robinson and I, we've been working very hard to keep this a surprise until this moment. So, at this point, congratulations, and Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Kathy Keen was born and raised in Lowell, the second oldest of nine siblings. She is the wife of Mr. Gerard Keen, of forty-eight years, a mother to four hard-working gentlemen, as well as a friend, confidant, and mentor to so many. As a young child, her father always told her, she may not be the smartest of the group, but she had more drive than all of them combined. To be fair, Kathy's had more drive than most people I've ever met. Kathy graduated from Keith Hall in nineteen seventy and went on to further her education at Fitchburg State in seventy-four. She began employment with the city of Lowell in the fall of nineteen seventy-four as a teacher at the Greenwich in special education. Ms. Keen thrived in this role for twenty-plus years. In nineteen ninety-two, while still a full-time educator, as well as a full-time mom to four boys, her drive led her to pursue her master's in education from the University of Lowell. Nineteen ninety-seven was a special year for Kathy. Ms. Keen took on one of her biggest challenges when she was hired as the principal/head administrator for the first alternative high school in the city of Lowell. As if this new responsibility wasn't enough, this is the same year Kathy became the first woman to coach a boys' Babe Ruth baseball team to a state championship. It was not just inside the classroom Kathy was able to impact the lives of the youth of our city. It was also on the baseball field. She coached boys' baseball for twenty-plus years, from little league through senior league. Her teams were disciplined, and they were good. If you played for one of Kathy's teams, you played the game the right way. Kathy's patience and temperament have combined with her insatiable drive to make tremendous impacts in our community. She truly believes anyone can be motivated and shown the path of success, regardless of the background or what they may have been through. Kathy doesn't just speak about it, she rolls up her sleeves and proves it. Next year will mark fifty years of service in our community for Ms. Keen. When she retired a few years ago, she took on a role in the education department because she felt there were still kids that need her help. She has the type of energy and good-hearted nature that electrifies those that she meets. We have mentioned the words Lowell legend from time to time in these council chambers while speaking of great people that have contributed to our city. Kathy Keen is a hero, a coach, an educator, a wife, a mother, a neighbor, as well as a true legend in our city of Lowell. To this day, Kathy's drive continues to make our community a much better place.
Kathy, before I ask you to say a few words, I'm gonna see if any other counsel decides to say a few words as well? Any comments? Counsel Leahy?
Just say congratulations, and I enjoyed working with you when I was on school committee, and you always ran a top-notch school, and you're professional wherever you were, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other counselors? I just wanna say a quick word, Kathy, when I learn of your story, I'm so amazed and touched by it. Education itself is a challenge, but for you to take on special education and to do such a great job, you are blessed. You have a heart of gold, and it was touching to prepare the citation for you tonight, prepared by myself and Counsel Robinson, and signed by myself and entire city council. So after you say a few words, I would like to present the citation to you. The microphone is now yours.
I don't know what to say. I'm very surprised. I love working with kids. I retired, I loved when I ran the Cardinal, well, I started at the, I loved my special at Greenwich. That was, that was wonderful. I loved it. I loved working with the real needy kids. To get them to do anything was wonderful, and to see them on the street and have them say aye is awesome. I feel that same way with the alternative program, the Brady School, that was the middle school that I started, and one of my teachers is here, David, he was one of the Paris, and he was also my assistant coach for many of those years that I was coaching. We had a lot of the kids from the Brady onto the Cardinal who were on our teams up, and we had some wonderful years up there. The only thing that made me give it up was I became a grandmother, so that was the last year that I coached, in two thousand seven. And then, you know, we had, we moved to the Cardinal because we were too big for the Brady anymore, and we had a lot going on there. That was a wonderful program. And then the superintendent, Chris, asked me if I would go to the high school. So for one year, I had the Cardinal and the Malloy. That was a memorable year. That was quite challenging, but my, all my teachers and everything at the O'Connell, they, they were awesome. They knew what to do and how to do it, and, you know, we all just worked so well together. And then I went to the high school, and another great staff. We did a lot of good things there. And then I remember at the end of the year, she asked, she said to me, that's, this is too much. She said, you're gonna have to choose. She said, you know, where do you wanna stay? That was one of the hardest decisions, to leave my Cardinal, that I had running and buzzing, and it was wonderful, but I felt bad for the Malloy, because they had had three administrators in five years. So I had good people at the Cardinal. Dave Cook took over, and I stayed with the high school. And I ended up retiring because my mother is, she's still alive, thank God, she needed someone to take her to the doctors. So I was the second oldest, my other brother's in Vermont, who's older, and I was one that could retire, so I did. But then Jean Franco asked me to take Joe Hogan's place. So I went, oh, that's good, yeah, I can, I can do that, you know, four days a week, I'll do that. So that's what I'm doing now, and loving every minute of it, working with the courts and all that, you know, DCF, whatever.
Kids from the Brady onto the Cardinal who will run our teams up in, we had some wonderful years up there. The only thing that made me give it up was I became a grandmother. So that was the last year that I coached in 2007. And then, you know, we had, we moved to the Cardinal because we were too big for the Brady anymore. And we had a lot going on there. That was a wonderful program. And then the superintendent, Chris, asked me if I would go to the high school. So for one year, I had the Cardinal and the Malloy. That was a memorable year. That was quite challenging. But my, all my teachers and everything at the O'Connell, they, they were awesome. They did, knew what to do and how to do it and, you know, we all just worked so well together. And then I went to the high school and another great staff. We did a lot of good things there. And then I remember at the end of the year, she asked, she said to me, that's, this is too much. She said, you're gonna have to choose. She said, you know, where do you want to stay? That was one of the hardest decisions to leave my Cardinal that I had running and buzzing and it was wonderful. But I felt bad for the Malloy because they had had three administrators in five years. So I had good people at the Cardinal. Dave Cook took over and I stayed with the high school. And I ended up retiring because my mother is, she's still alive, thank God. She needed someone to take her to the doctors. So I was the second oldest, my other brother's in Vermont who's older, and I was one that could retire, so I did. But then Jean Franco asked me to take Joe Hogan's place. So I went, oh, that's good. Yeah, I can, I can do that, you know, four days a week, I'll do that. So that's what I'm doing now and loving every minute of it, working with the courts and all that, you know, DCF, whatever. So I enjoy what I'm doing, makes you want to keep doing it. We'll see how much longer. And it just dawned on me this year, that is 49 years. It's, went quickly. But thank you very much. I didn't expect this at all. My son. What more can I say? Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to present this citation to you. Great, great job, council is keeping that one under the rap all, all this week. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Robinson, second by Council Leahy, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motions carry. We did have another citation on the agenda for tonight, but we will postpone this for
Counsel Janess.
the following regular meeting.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
The next item is number three, City Clerk.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel New.
3.1 is the minutes for acceptance by Council Regular Meeting, May 30th.
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Andrew Tang.
I'd like to say a few words.
Finance Neighborhood Subcommittee, June 1st.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, yeah, thank you very much for the appointment, the city manager and the entire
City Council Special Meeting, Fiscal Year 24 Budget, June 6th.
city councils. And they're trying their best to serve the city.
For acceptance, need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Gishia, second by
That's, that's why all we want to do, give back to the city.
Wonderful. Council Janess, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motions carry.
Thank you.
A short speech is a sign that you will do well. Counselor Yam, did you have a request to suspend the rule?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. And may I suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rule to move item 4.2 because
We now will continue with the items we left off, which is the communication from city
we have the persons here in the chamber so we can continue.
manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with the alphabet A, motion response to provide extra patrols at car wash at Rogers
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Yam to suspend the rule and take item 4.2 out of order, second Street. by Counsel Scott. Any comments or questions, Counsel Gishia? Item 4.2 is the communication appointment of Andrew Tang to the License Commission,
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager, I thank you for the response. I think stepping up those are gonna make a difference in the neighborhood.
second by Counselor Rook and Counsel Robinson.
I had a resident call me and say that it already has. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the chief, if we can continue just trying to focus on
All in favor, say aye. I'm going to do roll call. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson.
that.
Yes.
But, you know, one of the things that's alarming is even when we're standing out, the other
Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
day, we're out for a flag raising, for the Portuguese flag raising, and we see these cars
Yes.
Counsel Yam.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
go by, they're lower to the ground and they're extremely loud and you can't even hear someone
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
at the microphone speak. And there's everybody around. I just wish that we could step up our patrol of that. We all know that they drive by, the cruises and everything. I just wish that we would step up and start to try to enforce that more. That was one of the major complaints over on the Rogers, including other things, but on the Rogers Street project. But I thank you for stepping that up. One of the residents did call back and say that it is working, so if you just could please continue that throughout the summer. Thank you.
Chief?
No, I appreciate the comments, understood. And we are trying to step up our enforcement, especially in the downtown area as well for those quality of life issues. I hear what the council is saying loud and clear. And hopefully you're seeing those patrols downtown as well. And that's my, that's been my short-term goal, and we have some long-term goals, and I look forward to making those happen.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I'd also just like to thank the chief for, for taking action on this. I've heard from several residents that are very happy that changes have been made there. I drive, drive by there pretty frequently. The few times that I've gone by, there's actually been a patrol car sitting in the back of the parking lot. So just again, thank you for taking action on this.
No other comments. We now go to the next motion response, alphabet B. This is on the July 4th, La Lasha Park. Any comments or questions, Counsel Robinson?
I'd just like to thank everyone, Peter Crew and everyone, for the response. Looking forward to 4th of July. I'm glad we got it rolled out. I'm glad we were able to lock down the vendor for the fireworks on the 4th and looking forward to this year's celebration. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to, you know, thank CASE for their work on this. And it's always a great time and looking forward to this celebration in the city as we do every year. I was just wondering, Mr. Manager, you might be able to speak briefly about the launch point of the fireworks? I know there was some confusion and some, some things put forward, some concerns from residents. So if we could just clear that up for folks as to where those fireworks will be launched from, I think it'd be a good, good time to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counsel, yes, the launch, the launch point is changing, I guess, on a linear standpoint. The launch point has always been by the Aiken Street Bridge. And Ms. Silk, have they finalized exactly where the launch point's gonna be? It's going to be what I would say is closer to the Cox Bridge. So typically it would have been north of the Aiken Street Bridge, being lit off. So when you're at La Lasha Ballpark, you'd have the opportunity to see them. So it's heading downstream, if you would. So it is across, it is across the river, not close to Boarding House Park, if that, if that helps you, Counselor.
Yeah, and if I can confirm that the exact location is often finalized, we're working with fire prevention and the fireworks vendor to make sure, you know, safety first. And we're looking to do it this week, so we're just working in conjunction with the appropriate departments for that.
Right.
But no, it will not be on the south side of the river.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager, through to Deondra, you mind just, since we're discussing the 4th of July fireworks, do you mind just briefly letting people know what we're gonna be having at Boarding House Park this year with the fireworks?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for the question. So we will be closing French Street and having several food trucks there for food and drink for purchase. We will also be having entertainment, roving entertainment from Cirque du Light and a bubble performer, as well as live music from Xine and the Intents and Tea and the Gents and a DJ as well. So it'll be really fun, family-friendly entertainment, a really nice evening. Excited about it.
Excellent, thank you. And what are the hours for that?
Oh, sure. So right now we're looking at 5:00 to 9:30.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here now, thank Counsel Leahy.
Can we get the assistant manager in a big bubble when they do the bubble show?
I'm not quite sure if that was necessary comment, Counsel Leahy. Counsel Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we on the fireworks, 4th of July, there will be a lot of, you know, firework that led by residents. It's okay to do firework at home and stuff, but, you know, a certain time, sometime it go after 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the morning. I'm hoping the chief is here to be able to maybe enforce it. It's very disturbing, especially for elderly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. Silk. No other comments or questions on that 4th of July motion response? We now go to the last motion response, the alphabet C, which is on youth commission. Any comments or questions, Counsel Yam or Counsel Robinson? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to Melissa DeRozzi and the entire team that, that put a lot of work went into this motion response and greatly appreciated. Some of the suggestions that, that I've been able to have conversations with members of the community is some considerations would be an adult. I think this, I'd like to refer this ultimately to a youth subcommittee to hash out some of the specifics that need to be considered still. But just some preliminary ideas that, that were thrown around was maybe some of the, because all of these I believe will be appointed by the city manager. And maybe that's something LPS and, and the class president or the designee would, would have a seat by default. Homeless youth rep, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Incorporated, the different sport organizations throughout the city, Project Learn, CTI Youth Services. I mean, we have so many, so many groups that, that deal specifically with youth. And I'd love to see pretty much a youth council come to fruition where they can split off and work in their own subcommittees and, and bring initiatives forward to the full body for consideration to help implement whatever thoughts and ideas or whatever voids are in the city. So thank you for this work and I would like to make a motion to send this to a youth subcommittee, please.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
On favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, that motion is carry. Any comment on that motion response, Counsel Yam?
Thank you, and I want to echo my colleague, Counsel Robinson's great work. I appreciate the, the report and extend this extensive report. And thank you to Ms. DeRozia and then, and the city managers and his team, meeting with different youth organization. And I think that's to show the commitment that this administration is committed to, you know, get the youth input on our daily and decision-making as well. As we can see, some of the youth from A-Grader, from Wang School, from Stock Close, you know, also reaching out to Counselor of the issue that need indeed to them, including like the bike lane and, and then the environmental issues, homelessness. So they are really proactive. So I just want to thank Ms. DeRozia for the report and the whole city managers and his team as well. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselors, thank you very much for referring it to the youth subcommittee. I think it's a great idea. We did talk about, we have the ability to go from as low as eight to 21, I believe. I think we could anticipate, you know, talking to as many partners as possible, you know, throughout the different districts as well and, and, you know, Little Boys and Girls Club to try to make that up. And then, and other issues I think we may want to expound upon, do we want to stay within the high school or the eighth grade or, you know, we're gonna have to try to move some of these folks around. So that's a very good piece. I would also suggest the little, working with the little public schools to get this up and running, hopefully for September school year. So thank you very much for that and we'll be looking forward to the youth subcommittee and hashing out these different ideas as to which organizations, organizations should, should be involved. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on that motion response? That was the last motion response. Now I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Drinkwater, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motions carry. The next item, 4.2, we already taken that item up already. We now go to item number, section 5, the votes from city manager. 5.1, vote to accept the gift from Metisack District Attorney, way through reading and second reading by title. And city council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept a gift from the Metisack District Attorney's Office of a bench as part of their Let's Connect benches program. Any comments or questions on, on this gift? Counsel Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, June 15th, DA Marion Ryan will be holding her monthly opioid task force meeting. And at that meeting, I take the minute to the meeting for our sheriff. I will thank her publicly right there at that meeting. So thank you very much for bringing that forward for the vote.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was excited to see this on the agenda because just last week I saw something online about a similar program that other municipalities have, have set up in their parks and in their playgrounds specifically, with small brightly colored benches for kids. And the idea is the kid would go and sit on this bench, be called a buddy bench or a bench of friends, something along those lines. Basically, kids that, who are looking for someone to, to play with, may, may not have anyone, they may be shy about walking up to kids. The idea is that the kids would go and sit on the bench and someone would come over and say, oh, do you want to come play with me? And, you know, it seemed like it was something that has potential. So I think that it kind of dovetails nicely with this motion and I think it'd be cool if we could do something like that in our parks, around our playgrounds in the city. Really help kids, particularly coming out of the pandemic, you know, social connection and, and growth has been hard for a few years now and this might be something that, that helps kids and gives them a little extra push to, to get to know other kids around the city. So if we can do something like that, that'd be pretty cool. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Newen. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel New?
Yes.
11 years.
The next section on the agenda is item line number six, orders from city manager. 6.1, order 60-day trial, way through reading, second reading by title. And city council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning section 266 dash 6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any Counselor? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. So this has been going on for quite some time now. So I, I get, I get a lot of opposition from the neighborhood. This resident feels that it's important to do this. I thought that the signs that were up now would be efficient. I'm willing to do this trial, but is there a way, can anybody answer, do we actually know what the count is for the traffic going up and down the street?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. I don't have the count in front of me, Counselor. This was something obviously put forth by, I will say, residents or resident. And this is a response by the, by our traffic engineer to satisfy, you know, any type of responses. I think that we will talk about this in the future, about where this should go. Could this go to traffic, a traffic subcommittee prior to happening, prior to this happening and moving in this direction? You brought that to my attention. I think it's a, it's a decent idea because we really shouldn't know, we're, we're trying to satisfy, obviously, all of the residents throughout the city. And sometimes something like this will come forward and it's a, it's a movement by a few.
Okay. I, I understand the concern from the neighbor, but then again, it is a street that a lot of people in the neighborhood use. So it's a 60-day trial, right? And it can come up for review again, so. Okay, so we'll just.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Yes, all the 60-day trials will come up and go down. I met a, a group of residents out in your area that there are a couple of other 60-day trials going on and there are some of being widely thought of, let me put it that way. There's a very, there's a lot of thoughts on it at this time. But we'll, we'll collect all that information, that data, data and bring it back to you.
No other comments or questions? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Yam. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel New?
Yes.
11 years.
The next line item on the agenda are the reports of the subcommittee. Counsel Rook?
Can I make a motion to take 9:15 out of order? We have someone here to speak on it.
Motion by Counsel Rook to take, was it line item 9.15?
Yes, please.
9.15, second by Counsel Robinson. 9.15 is a motion by Counsel Rook, request city manager have the proper department work with the youth baseball softball league on the upcoming tournament season, second by Counsel Gishia. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Matt La Lasha.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administration, I appreciate this motion being brought forward as an opportunity to let the city know what's coming. Over these next couple of weeks, that's exciting and is the culmination of a lot of work. In these next two weeks, at the Shed Park Fields, we will be hosting the baseball league here in Lowell that came together to kind of get ourselves to be able to do these exact things. When we started the process, they'll be hosting the district tournament, so all the local teams from the Cal Ripken League will be coming into Lowell at Shed Park for the nine-year-old level. And that will be this Saturday through Friday of this week. And the 12-year-olds will be hosting at the backfields behind the Wang at Batokaville Memorial School, the district tournament as well. I want to take a step back before coming to that point to let you know how we got here and to thank a number of people for getting us here. When I first became heavily involved in the baseball league back six years ago, our parks were in need of investment. We were in need of, of making a commitment to the future of the kids and what it would then show of what we care about here in the city of Lowell. Over the course of the, the end of the previous administration and then heavily into this administration, a commitment was made to spend, and this council and previous council made a commitment to spend $200,000 fixing up 18 fields in the city of Lowell. And they just want to let everybody know what that has done. We now host the largest 12-year-old tournament on Memorial Day weekend in the area. We had families coming in from as far away as Maine, New Hampshire, South Shore, all coming to all of the parks or vast majority, many of the parks that we made the investment in. To hear people say things like, this is Lowell? Wow, we don't have this in our town. It was wonderful to hear a board member of the Danvers Youth Baseball League say, do you think we can call the city and figure out how you guys did it? That's, that's commendable to everybody. And it's commendable not just to the administration, to the planning department, but I want to give a great thanks to the Parks Department as well. As we were going through this process, there was a lot that we had to push to make sure things were being done right. And everybody pushed and got on board to get this to this point. The Parks Department was there all weekend for Memorial Day, put us in a very positive light, showing off Lowell. That Memorial Day tournament had people staying in downtown Lowell, eating in downtown Lowell, staying in our hotels. That resonates, that resonates of what we care about. It's a great way to show what we're, what we're about here. And I know there are so many other projects and so many other ways that we have to spend money in this city, but I just wanted to give a thank you to everybody for making that investment. And as I say, from planning to parks and on, straight on through. And to give you an idea of where this can go, the final is we will be hosting the states for the nine-year-olds at Shed Park as well over the 4th of July week. And that's gonna bring in people from all over, South Shore, Central, Central Mass and up in our area. And the Cal Ripken League here in eastern Massachusetts is the largest in the United States and they are making a commitment for Lowell to host states every year at some level moving forward because of what we have done. And so, again, I just want to thank everyone. I hope as we move forward, I've had a conversation with both the Parks and DPW Department, I don't want to leave them out. Director St. Seer has been fantastic in helping in this whole process. And, you know, Director Shannon Cohen has been co-hand, so that he doesn't get mad at me, has been fantastic. And as we lead forward these next few weeks, we're hoping that everyone will continue to make this investment and keep the ball rolling forward because it's really nice to hear people talking about Lowell in this way. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Matt, for coming to speak. Counsel Rook?
All set.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counsel Gishia?
Mayor Chow, through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, can we just make sure that we go through all those parks up there before we get the guest in over that time period? I was up there the other day when they had the DPW outing and up on the upper softball field as you went into the gate, one of the posts was bent and it looked like it was something that should be fixed. And maybe it has been already, but I just think if we could just make sure we beautify it and make sure we put out enough trash barrels and stuff for that event. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always had a special feeling in my heart for people that don't look for any credit. They go about their business as fathers, husbands, and they spend their precious time that they have to mentor children by way of being coaches. And it's amazing to think that they shape the future of our city, not only just the city, but where these children grow up and move to other places or stay here in Lowell. And you never hear them look for any credit. And yet I want to publicly thank all the coaches that mentor our children and do remarkable things. These are the kids that are gonna grow up, learning how to cooperate with each other, that...
Uh, Mayor Chow, through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, can we just make sure that we go through all those parks up there before we get the guest in over, uh, that time period? I was up there the other day when they had the DPW outing and up on the upper softball field as you went into the gate, one of the posts was bent and it looked like it was something that should be fixed. And maybe it has been already, but I just think if we could just make sure we beautify it and make sure we put out enough trash barrels and stuff for that event. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always had a special feeling in my heart for people that don't look for any credit. They go about their businesses, fathers, husbands, uh, and they spend their precious time that they have to mentor children by way of being coaches. And it's amazing to think that they shape the future of our city, not only just the city, but where these children grow up and move to other places or stay here in Lowell. And you never hear them look for any credit. And yet I want to publicly thank all the coaches that mentor our children and do remarkable things. These are the kids that are going to grow up learning how to cooperate with each other, the team spirit, uh, unity. It's just so many things that they learn through a person that is called a coach. So to the speaker that came up here and spoke, he's just one of the many that have shaped our youth into productive human beings. They could be, you know, idle is the handwork of, of the devil. So when these kids are busy and they're doing sports and they're getting their exercise and they're learning all these valuable things, it's because of the devotion and the time spent by coaches that make this all happen. So thank you to each and every one of them. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hear none. On favors, the eye opposed, say no, the eyes have it, that motion is carried. Any other suspension of rules since we're on that path right now? Hear none. We now return to the agenda where we left off, uh, which was the reports of subcommittee. There are two reports for this evening. The first one is the Finance and Neighborhood Subcommittee Meeting of June first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, what, uh, Chairperson Scott or Chairperson Mercier, who would like to go first? Councillor Mercier?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June first, at six P M., the Joint Subcommittee of Finance and Neighborhoods met in the mayor's reception room to discuss two issues. One, the CPC, Community Preservation Act funding request, and two, the residential parking placard program. Present were Finance Subcommittee Chair, Councillor Kim Scott, and members Councillor Gitchia, Councillor Robinson, and the neighborhood chair was myself and Councillor Gitchia and Councillor Janess, along with DPD Director Yvani Bayers Rose, Deputy CFO Austin Ball, CPA Chair Adam Bakie, Dylan Ricker, uh, Associate Planner, City Auditor Kelly Oaks, and Parking Director Terry Ryan. To give you a brief overview of what the, uh, Community Preservation Act is all about, it was signed into law in two thousand as a tool to assist communities in preserving open space, historic sites, and creating affordable housing. The city residents in their wisdom voted the city approve a one percent surcharge on, uh, Lowell property taxes to fund the local property tax, uh, and then in turn the city CPA. The state provided a match from the Community Preservation Trust Fund from the surcharge on documents filed at the Registry of Deeds. With the passage of the CPA, a nine-member CPC Committee Board was created to administer the CPA funds. That's a little overview of what the CPA is all about. All projects receiving CPA funds must receive both a favorable recommendation from the CPC Committee and approval from the city council. That is why this went before the joint subcommittee to review and give our recommendation and bring our findings back to the full council, either for approval or denial. So before a full vote is taken, let me present what was presented to the subcommittee. Outdoor space and indoor recreation, O'Donnell Park, open space and recreation applicant, the city of Lowell, funding five hundred and fifty thousand eighty-two dollars. The scope of work includes new playgrounds at the existing park in South Lowell. The, uh, community housing, they were, there was the Hadley House applicants was applicant was the Lowell Housing Authority. Speaking on this item at the meeting were, uh, Todd Chan, Lowell Housing Authority Executive Director, and Laura Watts from Capital Assets Management, and Mark Briere, Estate Project Manager. Each pled their case and very professionally done, I might add. Funding recommendation is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Approval is conditional on the applicants providing the city with an affordability restriction of not less than twenty years and for residents below fifty percent of the A M I. This includes a creation of five new affordable units of veterans housing as well as restoring the historic Hadley House located at seven nineteen Broadway Street. The estimated cost of restoring this historic building is two million dollars and the funding source is as follows. CPA will fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Nonprofit contribution, a hundred thousand. Private lending, five hundred thousand, and mass development grant, one million, and other project, projected sources, six hundred and fifty thousand. Next is historic preservation was Girls Inc. No speakers because of their event was at the same night. The applicants and the Girls Inc., who provided a very detailed overview in the form of a letter outlining all that they aimed to accomplish, which was precisely what we were looking for. The scope of the work would be the restoration of the historic structure and the use of the funding of a hundred and thirty-five thousand on windows, siding, doors and roofs, uh, roofing. Historic preservation, six hundred and thirty-five Middlesex Street, the James Boyle Building, which was the former dry cleaners, uh, right next to the Boys and Girls Club. We had Richard Hopper from RG Realty LLC. He spoke on the scope of the work of restoring the historic building structure back to preserve its instruct, its structural integrity, including the restoration of the brick facade and structural work, the goal of which is two families in the building and a new business on the bottom floor, and the CPA amount is a hundred thousand dollars. The last applicant under the historic preservation was Saint George Church on forty-four Princeton Boulevard, and the parish council was the applicant of fifty thousand dollars to restore this historic gold dome. A parish, uh, uh, sorry, a parishioner, Stella McGaliff, uh, was there to speak and supported the project along with numerous parishioners who supported, uh, were there to support their submission. After hearing all the speakers and readings, reading all the information on each, I entertain a motion to accept a recommendation of the Community Preservation Commission to support all five applicants and approve their funding. The vote was made by councillor Scott and seconded by myself. The motion was unanimous. So based upon this joint subcommittee recommendation and their votes, I'd like to offer a mo- motion, uh, on a roll call to support this particular motion, Mr. Mayor. I'd, I'd like a roll call on what I just said to support the five applicants for the CPA amounts. So if I could have that in the form of a motion.
Motion by councillor Mercier, second by, do you have a second councillor by councillor Gitchia? Um, Mr. Clerk, um, could you clarify the motion?
The motion will be to accept the report as a report of progress and adopt the motion as accepted by the subcommittee.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
We need a roll call?
Yeah. Council Robinson. Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Gitchia.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Council Nune.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now that's only half of it. I'll try to make this quicker. The second issue was the residential parking placard program of which discussion, much discussion took place. There was talk about increasing the fee from ten dollars to fifty dollars a year, and a motion was made by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Janess, to raise the fee to ten dollars a month, which would be a hundred and twenty dollars a year and set from July to July, which is the start of the fiscal year. There are numerous placards out in front of homes that residents have not paid yearly on, yet they call the police when someone parks in front of their sign. We must have someone go around the city and collect these signs that are not valid anymore. We must initiate a rule similar to back central area where if one has a driveway, then you are not entitled to a placard. We must require property owners to obtain the signs for the tenant use. We must move to passport digital permitting, permitting for collection of data on signs to aid enforcement and provide reporting. This is something that is not available now. We are still, uh, a work in progress and not, we have not completed our programs yet. We are, we will come back with a full report when this is completed. This is the report of progress. If any of my colleagues wish to add to that, I thought I covered it all, but if they want to add to it, thank you.
Anything else to add? Councillor Scott?
No, that was a very, very detailed report. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. So just councillor Robinson isn't here, but so the suggestion is to go from ten dollars a year to ten dollars a month?
Yes, which, yes, which would amount to a hundred and twenty dollars a year from, and instead of, uh, saying this one expires in June, this one expires in November, make it simple. Get them all on a yearly basis whereby from July to July, if anybody wants to add onto that.
So they're gonna pay monthly though, or is it?
No, they'd pay one fee on July to July.
Okay.
It's actually ten dollars a month for the placard.
Okay. No, it just seems like a big jump, but, um, sounds good. Thank you.
Well, it's been ten dollars for like twenty years now. You think we should add something or what?
Council Gitchia?
Mr. Mayor, just to go off of councillor Leahy's thought processes, the sign process costs us fifty dollars to make and, and put them in place. We're losing forty currently. We charge the downtown residents to park in the garage, uh, an exorbitant fee compared to this. We're actually taking up a piece of road property where we can't plow or anything. We have always back and forths. So I think the bargain is the hundred and twenty dollars and, and it should be ten dollars a month. And, and I think that we actually brought it down to that more so than where some of us wanted to go for even more than that or delete the program altogether. Because at some point that program is a drain on our services. And I think that through you to the manager, if you could just elaborate a little on, on some of the drain that that causes, not only, you know, the police department, but you got the parking department. We're getting calls all the time. And for ten dollars or even fifty dollars, the cost itself is taking away service, valuable services, uh, to the residents in other areas for someone to have preferential parking in, in a place. So, Mr. Manager, if you're willing to, um, just elaborate on some of the demands that that draw takes on, on the city services.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Uh, council, one of the problems, uh, outside of the downtown area, um, parking enforcement, which we're looking to change, um, is really put to the police department. So when we really start thinking we have a district car that is out in the area, um, are they going to be out moving, um, or ticketing cars or doing other things that are more important? It's all falls into priority. So I think in this budget, we're looking forward, um, to saying in regards to, uh, parking, uh, that it should be under the parking department. And that's something we could, you know, work towards into the future. But to answer your question councillor, yes, it is a tremendous strain when, you know, uh, neighbors are having an argument back and forth in regards to, that's not my car, you can't park there. Um, but we don't have the resources in the sense of the police department, once again, being outside the downtown. We have enforcement in and around the downtown, as everybody knows, and those are our parking, uh, our parking enforcement agents. Uh, but once we go out into typically what I would refer to as the neighborhoods, uh, that is really the responsibility of the police department. Police department gets those phone calls and, um, we just have to be honest with ourselves. Is, parking's important? Yes, it is. But is it more important than maybe a call that came in that the police department was trying to, uh, trying to deal with? So there is a tremendous strain on, on that section of it. But I think, uh, with where we're trying to move the parking, um, the parking department, that could be something that we could be looking into the future, uh, trying to solve some of those problems. The, uh, the finances are, are, are real. Those, those, uh, those, um, signs, um, the ones that are out of date, but they are very expensive. And then we end up putting them up. So we're, we're almost taking a, I'm going to tell you, we're probably taking a loss. There wouldn't be a private company, uh, that would take this on for a hundred and twenty dollars. I think that, that the bonus would be, um, in the, in the later years. So I think it's a, a good move. Uh, it's a good move in, in this direction, in my opinion.
I, I do think that, you know, an enterprise fund is supposed to share, the user cost should go to the user and it's supposed to be funded so that it, it's self-sustaining. And the parking enterprise fund is nowhere near that. And this is a shared cost that it's a cost to this account that needs to go to the user fee. And when you look at that enterprise fund, we, we've talked about this at length. Um, we have to figure out ways to charge the user the actual cost and, and it's not happening. We also, and I thank, uh, Austin Ball for being there also, because we also talked about when we do the neighborhood walks, that they start looking at these signs and taking down the ones that are four and five years expired, even a year expired. If they're one minute expired, they need to come down. And we're doing neighborhood walks, so we should be very cognizant of that and pull them down so that now, and when we go to the method that councillor Mercier talked about, July would be their setup for a new sign. It would be very easy to spot when someone isn't in because your spreadsheet would just tell you at that point, this person didn't re-up, we need to go out to this house. Because right now that spreadsheet must be all over the place. And, and we're trying to make recommendations that will make it more efficient, but not have, right now what happens is I think that the downtown user, because of the amount that they're paying there is offsetting that fee for those signs. They're getting the money somewhere else to make that enterprise fund or we're losing. So I think some of the other parking areas now are picking up the cost for other user fees for them. And, and that's, that's really what I think the driver is in, in my mind to this is, somebody shouldn't be paying for someone else's use. And, and right now, forty dollars of that use or more is being absorbed by other people paying, uh, for parking. So I, I do thank councillor Mercier for the, uh, the unbelievable report. And, um, I think that it's going in the right direction where if people don't want them, don't pay the hundred and twenty dollars.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, councillor, it is an uncomfortable conversation, but in regards to the enterprise accounts, whether it be water store or parking, they are meant to sustain themselves. And as we all know, because the council, um, has taken some difficult votes over the past year, to make sure that those, um, uh, those organizations, those enterprises, those separate businesses, if, uh, if, if folks are, you know, paying, listening to this at home, uh, those separate businesses, uh, are not operating, uh, effectively. And it's, it's, it ends up being paid for by the taxpayers. So I think that this is gone and going in the right direction, once again, in, in my opinion. Um, I think that, um, trying to get a handle on our parking in our neighborhoods is just as important as trying to get a handle on the parking, uh, in another neighborhood, which is the downtown, of course. Uh, so I think that, um, realizing that each one of those, um, signs is, I'm giving a fifty dollar figure, plus someone going out to put it up, uh, you start to really see that there, there's a value there. And I think that it could be a coveted spot. And then future in the budget that I know that the council is looking at is the, the slight expansion, I'll say a slight expansion of, of parking, um, folks. We should be moving in a, in an appropriate manner that way as well. I know that, um, Assistant City Manager Machado has been working with, um, some of the monies, uh, in regards to fixing up even more so with, uh, some of the parking garages downtown. So we, there's a lot of parking, uh, things that are going on currently right now within the city. And I, I really, once again, to, to say it for the last time, I think we're moving in the right direction because this enterprise account, like all of our other enterprise accounts, should be operating, um, well, like a business. So, thank you.
Your say, councillor Gitchia?
The only one other thing I would like to add to this conversation is that in those enterprise funds, we should revisit the rates every year and make the adjustments yearly. So we don't watch something succeed, fill a reserve, but at the same time in the out years, drain that reserve to nothing and then, you know, jack up the rates to the sky again. I think we need to manage those accounts yearly and not, um, as the past has done and let it just fall high reserve, no reserve, then jack up the rates again because it's, it's not good for any rate payer to see that happen.
Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate the, the, the summary by councillor Mercier. She hit pretty much everything that I remember discussing. Um, we had a really good discussion and I appreciated, uh, having Director Ryan there. And we had some good back and forth. And he's going to take all that information and come back with kind of an updated proposal. And I'm looking forward to that discussion as well. Um, I will say though, there, there was, um, talk about how we would implement any, any kind of, um, program like this. Um, we talked about requiring the building owner to be the one that applies for the permit. So the billing owner is the one who'd figure out, you know, if it's a multi-unit building, how they're going to manage that spot. Um, so I think, I think it's important to have the bill, billing owners engaged in this process, um, and not just, you know, handing it off to their tenants and saying, you guys figure it out, uh, because that's only going to cause more chaos that the city is than, you know, because that's only gonna cause more chaos that the city is then gonna have to deal with. And I think that making the, the building owners responsible is a step in the right direction there. We also did talk about the potential for, for doing some kind of discount for senior or disabled residents. That was something that was discussed, and Director Ryan is gonna, gonna look at how we might be able to implement that. That obviously gets a little hard if the building owner is the one applying, but maybe it's an elderly resident who's gonna park there. So that was, that was kind of left with him to figure out how to, how to square that circle. But it was a good discussion. I think we moved in the right direction, and I appreciate all the input from the residents, my colleagues on the council, and the administration, who are all there listening and offering their ideas. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Through you to City Manager. Do you think ultimately down the line, once we can get a solid game plan with the resident parking situation, is that something that maybe residents will be able to renew utilizing the 3-1-1 system once we stand that up and start looking at that? So that way, it's kind of a remote access for each individual resident?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We're just having a discussion on that in regards to potentially being able to tie in a work order to it. So yes, so the answer is, we hope so. I don't want to speak for 3-1-1. That is something that obviously has been a big ask of this council. You specifically, Councilor, have been looking at this. But that is, that is our hope, that that is something that it should be able to do for future. And I know that Mr. Ryan is, would be very inclined to have something like that charged on a more regular basis, similar to how the residents in downtown pay for their, their monthly pass. That is definitely something we would be looking at.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on the subcommittee report? Here none, need a motion to accept the report's support of progress by Councilor Janes, second by Councilor Leahy, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. The second subcommittee report is on Technologies and Utilities Subcommittee Meeting on June 13, 2023. Any report, Councilor Janes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee met earlier tonight in attendance with myself, Councilor Mercier, and Councilor Noon, which make up the committee. We were also joined by Councilor Gitcher, City Solicitor Corey Williams, and MIS Director Maran Fernandez. The topic of discussion was a motion that I had on last week, or I think two weeks ago, the last meeting, about the potential for the city to adopt a cybersecurity ordinance. The brief overview of the ordinance would be that it would require the city manager to appoint a chief information security officer, not necessarily a new position, but someone in the, in the administration would be given that role. And then that role would be responsible for enforcing this cybersecurity ordinance, which would include adoption of a well-known cybersecurity framework. There's a bunch of them out there, put out by different organizations, that all kind of do different things to accomplish the same goal of having a secure information environment. And also would require the city, probably in two years' time, to begin doing annual audits by a third party who could come in and look at our policies and procedures as compared to the ordinance, sorry, as compared to the framework that was adopted by the city, be able to say, okay, you guys are meeting A, B, and C. You have some improvements to make on this other side, and just kind of build an iterative process where we keep building a better mousetrap as we move down the track. And additionally, it would, you know, require some third-party penetration testing as well, so that we can make sure that our defenses are up to snuff. We had a good conversation around this. Maran Fernandez was mentioning that he has been recently appointed to a state steering committee to develop policies and procedures for cyber preparedness and responses for the different municipalities across the Commonwealth, and that there's a multi-year grant and money available that's kind of flowing in through there. So there may be a funding opportunity there for the city to pursue over the next several years. There's nothing in that group right now that's targeted at municipalities, so this would be a nice buttress to that. And Solicitor Williams thought that this would be a good step and in the city's best interest to take. We had some more back and forth about how it would all work. And then to end the motion, end the meeting, Council Noon made a motion to ask the administration to work on a draft ordinance and then bring it back for further discussion and movement. So that's where I'll leave it, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you. Oh, there was one other thing I wanted to mention, which was Council Mercy mentioned that she had received a lot of complaints about people being assessed late fees after the cyber incident in April, whether or not it's related or not. But Maran said that he would look into that and try to, try to get that, get a resolution to that, because, you know, Council Mercy and I think everybody in the room agreed that if there's something that was, went out late because of the city's cybersecurity incident, we shouldn't be tacking late fees on to, to residents. I think that was it. Thank you.
No other hands for comments or questions? Need a motion to accept the report, as report of progress and to adopt the motions by Councilor Gitcher, second by Councilor Noon, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Robinson?
Motion to suspend the rules, take 8.4 out of order. We have a registered speaker present, please.
Mr. Clerk, do we have a registered speaker?
We don't have a registered speaker. This is, this is merely-
A petition to refer to a public hearing.
But would you wanna make a motion for that person to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Motion by Council Robinson to take item 8.4 out of order and to allow a person in President's Chamber to speak on this. Second by Councilor Rourke, item 8.4 is a WaveGod First Light Fiber request installation of underground conduit on Appleton Street for services to Verizon. Please state your name.
Yeah, good evening. It's Jay Dunn from WaveGod on behalf of First Light Fiber. Petition is basically to place conduit about 15 to 20 feet of conduit at the corner of Appleton and South Street, breaking out of a Verizon manhole to a riser pole. And the end goal is to get down into the Verizon CO down on Appleton Street.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from any of the councilors? Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the speaker. So I've already read this, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear that there's gonna be no work on South Street where there's a moratorium.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments or questions? Need a motion to refer to public hearing on June 27, 2023, 7:00 PM, by Councilor, Yem, second by Councilor Noon, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. Any other suspension rules since we're on that path again? Here none. We now go back to where we left off on the agenda. Item number eight, which are the petitions, 8.1, claims to property damage, no other comments or questions? Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Councilor Gitcher. Gitcher, you have a-
I have just one question to go to the manager, so that they're prepared during the hearing when it comes up, that the moratorium, I'm just wondering how close to the shoulder this work is gonna be on that new road over there? So if it's too close to the road, I just want to know where the trench is gonna be put, because there's a new road over there, so that, on the shoulder, that's all. If we can just have that information prior to this hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Right. No, no response, Mr. Manager? You're- Okay, it was the last response?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Your say, Council Gitcher? Okay. Motion to refer to Law Department by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Janes, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. 8.2, miscellaneous, Elaine Hopkins requests handicap parking sign install installation at 67 Tyler Park, Apartment 4. If no other comments or questions, need a motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for report and recommendation by Council Robinson, second by Councilor Leahy, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. 8.3, Boston Gas DBA National Grid request installation of SCADA box, S-C-A-D-A box, at intersection of Bradley and First Street. If no comments or questions, need a motion to refer to public hearing on June 27, 2023, 7:00 PM, by Council Scott, second by Councilor Rourke, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. We already have taken up 8.4. We now go to the city council motions. We'll start with 9.1, a motion by Councilor Noon, request city manager work with appropriate departments to update city council on progress regarding the proposed zoning amendment to allow a pathway for permitting marijuana home delivery in Lowell, second by Council Robinson. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This work had been done, started with the former directors of Developmental Service, Eric Slagold. I just want to know where we at in term of the proposed zone amendment, and also whether or not we change any host community agreement as we had with the dispensary. And also if there's any discussion as to the limit of how, how many license we're going to be issuing. Earlier, I just segue out of this, I was approached by Ms. Norma Ronfriggin. She's expressed concern of having this going on. So I said to her that once the managers give an update on this, you know, she can sign up to speak if she want to. I just wanted, you know.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Here none, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. Motion 9.2, Councilor Noon, request city manager work with Lowell's service provider, CTI, to update city council on the program providing hotel rooms for housing insecure residents, second by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A while back, and I know it's about a month or so ago, I was told that the program, the hotel program, hotel bed program that was a part of the, in conjunction with the shelters, state program that giving to the nonprofit, particularly in this case, CTI, that is gonna be ending soon. And they provide, you know, dozen and dozen, dozen of beds for unhoused population, should that happen. And that's going to really return a lot of unhoused population to the street of Lowell. So that was concerned, and I know that the CTI directors has put out letters to the governor office. I'm not sure if that, that they have heard that from the governor office yet as to whether or not this program get extend. I also know that the managers has working with CTI and other nonprofit to try to reach out to the administration, the governors, and the tenant governors to see maybe if there's anything we can, they can help in term of bringing back this program or extend this program, or find some other alternative to help the city of Lowell and the surrounding city with regard to the unhoused population.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Here none, on favors I, post say no, the I's have it, motions carry. The next motion is 9.3, Council Drinkwater, request city council discuss a vote to register support of House 3012 slash S2027, an act authorizing project labor agreements, second by Council Mercy. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These bills filed in the state legislature take something that is currently an option for project owners, both in the, the private sector and in the public sector, which is to enter into a project labor agreement, essentially a pre-hire agreement before a construction project that sets standards on, on things like wages, working conditions, dispute resolution, to make sure projects move efficiently, on time and on budget. But also can set policy goals that are important within the community, such as hiring goals for, for women, for people of color, for veterans, as well as setting standards for the inclusion of apprentices on, on construction projects. So it takes something, again, that is an option for municipalities, and it removes what is oftentimes a financial hurdle for municipalities when they decide in a democratic fashion that a project labor agreement is in the, the public interest. Because policy around how a city or town may enter a project labor agreement has essentially been decided by the courts rather than the legislature, what a city or town then has to do is to pay for a feasibility study, which can conservatively cost around $40,000 or $50,000 before they can actually enter into a project labor agreement and be sure that it will hold up legally. What these bills essentially do is allow the legislature to set that policy and really remove that financial hurdle of funding a feasibility study to move forward on something that has been vetted by the public authority that is entering into the project. I know that this came up here in the city a few, few years ago. And a lot of the discussions around whether or not to enter a project labor agreement centered around whether to fund a feasibility study and where that money would come from. You know, we're, we're going through our budget deliberations right now, and we know we, we face tough financial decisions in the tens of thousands of dollars despite being one of the largest municipalities in the state. $40,000, $50,000 starts getting you towards things like funding a position. So these aren't easy financial decisions, and should you want to move forward with such a study in the midst of a fiscal year, would potentially be faced with a budget transfer. So these bills, I think, could really benefit municipalities who, again, as an option, decide that they want to enter into an agreement such as this. Really just makes it a smoother process that a public authority or an elected body could vet and decide that they want to do, and, and again, eliminate the, the financial hurdle of the feasibility study. So these are in, in process and have been filed in the legislature. And I think, again, it would benefit the city and hoping the city council can just weigh in so we can register our support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleague for filing this, and I hope our colleagues fully support this. Again, I've seen many lives changed due to opportunity. I think PLAs sometimes make absolute sense. Anytime we can remove a hurdle, and especially a financial hurdle as well, from the wish or will of the residents or this elected body, it's a bonus. And when you start talking about organized labor and offering people in the community an opportunity to work on construction projects and different job sites, again, I've seen it firsthand through many. I have many residents, even in Centerville, that are, through the trade unions, just happened to get lucky and work on the Lowell High School project. But you develop their sense of pride. So I think this is, you know, along those lines where it's a benefit to the city if this bill is passed. And so I don't see how we don't support this. Thank you.
Council Rourke?
I think it was to be, also thank Council Drinkwater for bringing this forward, and echo the comments of both he and Council Robinson. This could be a really good, good thing for the city of Lowell. And I would just request, you know, a roll call vote on this motion. Thank you.
Council Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I agree with the previous speakers that Lowell is built on unions when you go back to the mill days with, with the women. And I just think that when you start looking about Lowell, that this is an important piece for us to even have cost savings at the same time as Council Drinkwater outlined that would save municipal funding when we're starting to get tight in the crunch. So I do thank Council Drinkwater for putting this forward, and I echo Council Rourke's opinion of taking a roll call. Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you. I would just also like to echo support for this motion and for these, you know, going forward with the House and the Senate in supporting them. I think it provides important protections for women and minorities in the workforce, also training programs that are so vital to make sure there's, you know, safe working conditions on jobs. And I think anything that can take the hurdle away is a good thing. Thank you.
No other comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitcher?
Yes.
Council Janes?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Levin Yes?
The next motion is 9.4, Council Yem, request city manager have the Law Department provide a report on the implications of the US Supreme Court's decision, Tyler versus Hennepin County, and the city's upcoming tax lien auction, second by Council Robinson. Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 25, 2023, the US Supreme Court issued a unanimous decision that I think, I feel that may affect Lowell, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, the U.S. Supreme Court issued a unanimous decision that I think, I feel that may affect Lowell, Massachusetts. In Tyler versus Hanipen County, the court held that Minnesota law that allows local government to sell a home for unpaid property tax and then keep the, any money from the sale that exceeded the tax due was a government taking of property without just compensation, which violating the Fifth Amendment. Geraldine Tyler is a ninety-four-year-old and in nineteen ninety-nine, she bought a one-bedroom condo in Minneapolis and lived alone there for more than a decade. But as she aged, her family then decided to move her to a senior community. So she moved and in twenty-ten and the family failed to pay property tax, which is about twenty-three hundred, but then including the unpaid tax and penalties, it come out to be fifteen thousand. So the county seized her property condos, sold it for forty thousand and take out the, pay off the debt of fifteen thousand and the county keep remaining twenty-five thousand for its own use. Massachusetts and fourteen other states have similar laws and these are basis of the tax lien auction that have become so popular here in the past decade. The city of Lowell is in the process of scheduling such an auction for delinquent tax account in the city. Considering the Supreme Court decision, it might be wise that the city would hold off on schedule that for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions by any of the councilors? On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point five, Councilor Robinson, request city manager have property department evaluate turning Amwood Avenue into a one-way, second by Councilor Rourke. Councilor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Councilor. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point six, Councilor Robinson, request city manager work with the proper department to consider improving area of Aiken Avenue that contains Welcome to Centerville sign, including flower boxes, public art, et cetera, second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. This is brought to my attention. We have some partners in the community that are willing to step up and help us out in this corner. I've been in contact with UTL as well as Central Labor Council, I believe, and they're interested in donating or doing, working with the city to improve this area, as well as the Centerville Neighborhood Group meeting. Some of the residents had some pretty good ideas, even to the extent of potentially utilizing all-weather type panels for the background at the fence and allowing art to be on those panels, which would be interchangeable and maybe we could rotate those throughout different locations in the city. So those were some of the ideas and suggestions that came up at the Centerville Neighborhood Group meeting. It's, the Vol Kids did an incredible job redoing the sign. It looks great. It's simple, clean, but I think it does need a little bit of dressing up because it is a main focal point when you come over the Aiken Street Bridge. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on that motion? On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point seven, Councilor Robinson, request city manager have the property departments explore the feasibility of implementing a right-to-first refusal, right-to-first refusal program with intent to preserve affordable housing, second by Councilor Scott. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I've also given my colleagues a copy of this program. This is just a matter of looking to other communities and seeing what have they done that's kind of outside-the-box thinking to try to address some of the challenges that we face. Not sure if this program would work in Lowell and what the data, the other communities seen it, but this comes from Salem, Mass. And again, any kind of opportunity that we see to preserve affordable housing stock, we all know it's very challenging trying to increase new housing stock, but communities are finding they're losing affordable housing stock at a rapid race because of, you know, investment groups coming in and grabbing these properties. So I think this is something at least let's put our eyes on and begin the conversation around. Thank you.
On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point eight, Councilor Robinson, request city manager take a look at the surplus properties citywide with intent on increasing city's real estate portfolio to facilitate city's current and future needs, second by Councilor Drinkwater. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, we've heard, over the past year and a half, we've heard so many needs the city has. We've outgrown so much. We're paying rent and leases for space that we're currently utilizing and I just think we might not have been as forward-thinking or quick to act when opportunities arrived in the past. And so, you know, any kind of, any opportunities that we can get, St. Louis property, if that ever became available, we have one over in Patagonia, I believe, that potentially could be available. All of these projects, I mean, I just hope the city gets proactive and aggressive on acquiring any kind of inventory because we're hearing that they're teaching classes in some spaces bursting at the seams. So anything we can do to try to start increasing our real estate portfolio to accommodate this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Threw you to the manager on this motion. Have we, has anybody from the school department or have we looked into the John Doc School?
Mr. Mentor?
Has anybody contacted you?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, we're in the process of putting something out. We can't particularly target one area. We'd have to put out the RFP to say we're looking for, I'm making this up, ten thousand square feet of space that could be turned into a school or a police department or whatever the case may be. So we're actually in that process. Right now, the school department has sent us over some information. We're just waiting on the one particular piece that actually is being discussed now. It is that ten thousand north, you know, what is that square footage that we're looking for? Is it, and please, ten thousand, I'm only, I'm just throwing it out there. We want to make sure that it's either very specific to what the school department's needs are or something that is just a, not a catch-all. We don't need, you know, five thousand or something, but what exactly we're looking for. So when it comes to individual, individual properties, that is not how we go out and purchase. Would give everybody the opportunity throughout the city to say, I have exactly what you're looking for. I would like to put in an RFP as well. And then throughout the process, I hope our purchasing agents listening, because he'll correct me, I'm sure, later, but throughout the process, we'll then make the decision if this particular one fits the criteria that we're looking for. I hope that answers your question, Councilor.
It does. It's just something that's long overdue and I wish the school department had moved quicker on this, but we'll see where it goes.
We've had a great partnership with that and we're just waiting on one final piece.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my only question on this is really, what is the space that we're looking for intended for? Has the school department come forward with the facilities master plan telling us this is the space that we need at this point in time? I'm just not sure. We keep talking about purchasing properties, but I'm not sure that we have a plan in place for what we need it for. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. We have talked, I have talked specifically with the superintendent to have a discussion that there are a number of buildings that they've been looking at, potentially giving back to the city, selling, bringing locations together so that, Councilor, those discussions have happened, but we are still, we're just waiting for one more piece as to what, once again, as I was saying to Councilor Leahy, what's the square footage we're exactly looking for? Is it going to be X plus or it needs to be X minus? So those discussions have been had. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're ironclad. They're just, there've been discussions about areas that the superintendent would like to consolidate, might be a better term, as well as some of the rental pieces that the school department has been renting. They would be looking to bring those under one roof as well. I hope, I hope that's answering the question that you're looking for.
It is. I guess I'm just asking exactly what you just said. Has that work already happened? It's happened for years, the discussion about, you know, the Laura Lee being valuable real estate, the LeBlanc, moving the rental from Chelmsford or the central office. And I'm just looking to see, has the school department, you know, had a discussion, a plan put forward, an RFP to figure out their space needs?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Everything you're touching upon is a conversation. I know, Councilor, you're on the school committee. All of those conversations have been happening. I'm just reluctant to say which one would be closed or sold or given back to the city because that, that hasn't been finalized at this time.
You asked, Councilor Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Roberts said that you had had this up earlier?
Thank you. Real quick, are we familiar with what's going on with that, what is it, St. Joe's property, the old nuns or nurses area there?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. St. John, just for clarification, Councilor, St. John's Nursing Building over on, yes, we've been in contact with some of our housing partners as well as with the administration over at the Lowell General Hospital, Tufts Medical. We have had conversations. There are some real challenges over there. There are challenges that I'm not so sure we're going to be able to overcome either ourselves or any of our partners. But it is something that I have to say that Amy Howie, the conversation's been very, very fluid and they're looking to help. So if those, if we can overcome those challenges and it really has to do with their equipment and things that have been in there, if we could overcome those challenges, that's something that we could probably reignite in the future, but not at this time.
And the only other one that I've been seeing sit in pretty much dormant, I don't know if anyone's doing anything with, is the one on Summer Street there, the Elliott building. Is that, somebody grab that finally?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Favor Street, the old school, that is vacant. It has an X on it. It's one of our historic buildings here in the city. The community teamwork had come forward probably about, I would say, eight to nine months ago with a proposal that at the time, they did a fabulous job. I don't want to say that they didn't, but I'd like to say for the bang for the buck, there was a lot of money and support that was going to be needed from the city. And I apologize, I don't have the dollar figure on the top of my head, but when you started comparing the number of bedrooms that you could get and you find out how much money it was going to cost, it wasn't a feasible piece. We are looking at school, excuse me, Summer Street as well as favor, as well as our building across the street. We're looking at that in conjunction with our historical folks and the fact that we just hired a new real estate asset manager just a few weeks ago. Those are some of our historical pieces and challenges, quite frankly, to see what we're going to do next. A lot of these, some of these buildings, I should say, the two specific that we're talking about right now, they've been neglected for a number of years. And I don't want to make a comment as to what, what is going to happen to them at this time because we're, we're putting out the long ball to see if there's anybody we can get because of the amount of money that we believe is going to have to go into this to make it habitable, to be quite frank. So all options are on the table right now. We are looking for that, that long opportunity, but we're also unfortunately looking at different opportunities. But we're going to try to stay as positive as we can for the, for the historical upkeep of the city.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of the motion is that, that Councilor Robinson would like to see the city find a way to increase the real estate portfolio, looking at the surplus properties and then the discussion go on to the school and all that. So am I misunderstanding the motion? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this motion was pretty much looking to increase the portfolio due to facilitate the current and future needs, but technically, the schools are the city's future and current needs as well also because we provide the learning space for the schools. So this is all, it is a relevant part of the conversation. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That building on the corner of favor, which in Summer Street is city property, whether it's a school or it's any type of other building, it is a city property. And if it's historic, which it is, it was an old Elliott school many years ago. And I believe that at one point, people, DYS, took it over for some time after DYS stopped being there. I'm understanding, I believe, that the people, the company that was doing the lot overpass, did they not rent that out from us? And they probably get so discouraged because homeless were breaking into the place, a fence was put around it. Every now and then, people come in that work at the Elliott Church and say, could you please shore up that fence? Because if it's a historic building, it's not going to be worth anything in a few years, the way that it's deteriorating and the homeless are in there and they're destroying it completely. And it's an eyesore. And you know, it's one thing to say the homeless are doing that, but that street is owned by private residents and they shouldn't have to live amongst deterioration of a historic city building. We're the property owner of that building and I asked time and time again for a fence to go around there and they told me they were ordering it because the fence they had before, the homeless broke into it and destroyed it and they were waiting to order a heavier fence. I don't, we had barriers, Jersey barriers around it. There's tons of clothes and trash and debris and it's a complete eyesore and I'm embarrassed to see it, just for saying it, that's all.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion nine point nine, Councilor Robinson, request city manager work with proper department to provide potential ways to significantly increase police presence in business district in conjunction with streetery's program, second by Councilor Yem. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, this is back to the panhandling and the harassment and the vagrancy. A lot of the vagrants that are actively panhandling in our streetery programs, I've witnessed with my own eyes, are getting very aggressive with some of the potential patrons to the point where they turn around and leave. And any kind of increased foot patrol or police presence to kind of curb that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. No, this is a good motion because I think at one point, we've all had this conversation with the manager or the manager's office or the chief of police and Chief Hoodon really is taking a look at this. He's taking it serious. So I appreciate the work that he's already started and that he's going to do towards it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank my colleague to bring this up and because the business owner downtown really cry for help and then if we are serious to create downtown the business district, we really need to support our local business owner by providing security, the foot patrol, in particularly, you know, you have dirt bike, you know, like travel right in the middle of the district and, which is illegal and we need to enforce that particularly in the business district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments or questions? On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point ten, Councilor Robinson, Councilor Gishia, request city manager examine reorganization of our DPW garage structure for efficiency and cost-saving potential. Who would like to go first?
Thank you. Again, this stems from years ago, there was, there was a dream to have a centralized facilities garage to maintain the fleet of DPW equipment, and it failed miserably. We're not set up for that. The model was, was pretty much picked up from Manchester, New Hampshire, that installed a state-of-the-art, multimillion-dollar facility. We're nowhere near that. And I think taking a hard look at, would it make sense to maybe specialize pretty much by division or department within the DPW? So that way, they would almost be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the equipment that they use and alleviate kind of a burden on the few mechanics that are trying to keep up with their own fleet as well of all the off-site fleets. So any kind of ideas on this would be greatly appreciated coming from the administration. Thanks.
Counsel Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. When, when we look at centralized garages, because we have so many satellite DPW spots, it becomes a challenge in prioritizing from one place to another can be very different. When the parks department goes over there and they need a lawnmower or they need their equipment fixed, it may not have the same priority as the DPW lands and buildings or streets because they're right there. It's human nature to take care of the person who's in the same building as you than it is for someone else, and priorities get swayed a little bit differently. And it takes a lot longer to get things done. And being in DPW life for so long, you see that a lot, whether you put oil change type of mechanics in the garages outside of, of the DPW, because you can get something readily done fast. If a check engine light comes on, you plug in, you can figure it out quick, over there and gone, rather than going down to the DPW where you have six-wheelers with the tires off and they're doing brakes, and they say, just put it over there. Because, you know, they're in the middle of doing something. And it's just prioritizing. And I think that there's a value in labor savings to people when they can actually go right in a garage. When you were at the water department, we had Dicky Brasad, or you had Bobby Souza there, and you pulled in and it got done immediately, and you were back out on the road. I don't know the challenge would have been if we were going to drive down to the old DPW and you pulled in in a water truck and said to John Wickers, can you fix this? He would have thrown the keys over there and pulled it to the side and said, yeah, we'll get to it. And I think that's where the, the thought process comes from this is more so that I think we waste a lot of time and we see things such as the inspection sticker thing that we talk about kind of fall by the wayside because it's not their priority. If you don't have a mechanic over there and you're just trying to get things done, sometimes the priorities just shift away from the necessity at the moment for each individual department. So that's really the thought is that, you know, maybe we just look in and, and maybe you have skilled people, like the water department has some skilled people up there who could take on this as a stipend and say, okay, you can change the oils or do something like that and, and get it ready. So that was my thought process when I, when I, when Counsel Robinson and I were starting to think about it, and we started to look at some of these vehicles and watching the, the time that they're down at the DPW. And I'm not saying that anybody's pushing anything aside. I'm just saying priority shift and sometimes you could get this done quicker. So that's really the thought process to me, and I'm going to be interested in seeing the motion response, you know, to see if we can make something maybe more efficient. And I know we just gave you more work. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on Favor, I post a note, I have it, motions carry. The next motion is 9.11. Joint motion by Counsel Janess and Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide an update on the status of the online OPA dashboard of previously requested by the council. Who would like to go first? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is something Counsel and I, Counsel, sorry, Counsel Robinson and I were talking about recently. It came up, constituents asked, have asked both of us what the status is on this. I know we've had some IT challenges. I don't know if that's entered into it, but we're hoping to see this soon. You know, we're down to 18 months to allocate all these funds. So I know a lot of people are anxious to see where the money's going and, and when this, when these projects are going to kick off. So this information is, is vital to, to keeping people informed. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, as I have seen the prototype on this, they are working through it right now. And my hope is, I'm going to tell you July 1st. However, it may be a little bit earlier than that. So it'd be within the next two weeks with everything that Counsel that you'd stated about some of the IT issues that we've been having with the budget next week. I would love to say it's the 27th, but I'm going to give myself just a few more extra days. But starting with the, the new fiscal year, we definitely will, will have that up and running.
That sounds great. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Any comment, Counsel Robinson? You all said. No other comments on Favor, I post a note, I have it, motions carry. The next motion is a motion by Counsel Janess, request city manager have proper department implement an outreach program to inform business about the new street parking kiosk and about, and 15 minutes free parking option in all areas of the city with meter parking, second by Counsel Nune. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion came out of a discussion I had with a downtown business owner who asked me a couple of weeks ago when they saw the, all the signs being removed with the spot numbers in the posts, they said, what, what are they doing with those? And I explained that they're being removed and it'd be a pay-by-plate option and the kiosk is coming. And they were like, oh, no one knows. And I went, I don't know what we've done for outreach, but if we could step that up and, you know, whether through the chamber or, you know, just economic development or somebody, just have a discussion so everyone, everyone knows what's happening and what to expect. I think the, the businesses would, would welcome that information greatly. Thank you.
Counsel Nune?
I echo what Counsel Janess just spoke. This morning, frequent brew awakening coffee in the morning, they don't know that there's a 15-minute free and how to pay for it and all that. So that educational campaign need to, you know, keep going and go into the right direction because it doesn't seem like, it doesn't sound like, sound like a lot of people doesn't know. So.
No other comments or questions on Favor, I post a note, I have it, motions carry. The next motion is, is 9.13. Counsel Janess request city manager have the proper department develop and implement a line painting program in conjunction with meter parking, second by Counsel Scott. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dovetailing with the last discussion, since the signs have come down and the posts have come out, I think people are getting a little braver with where they park. The, the lines in many of the spots that marked the parking spaces faded over time, gone, and now not having the, the signpost with the spot numbers, people are just kind of parking everywhere. So I think as, as important it is to mark the spaces where people can park, it's almost more important to mark the places they cannot, whether that's abutting, a crosswalk, a fire hydrant, or anywhere else, intersections, all that stuff. Because it seems like people are getting brave where there's no lines on the ground, and they're like, I can fit my car over here. And I suspect we'll only see that more as people continue to, to pay by plate and not space number.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, I, we will have another report on this, but we have our line painting crew out. Been, weather's been a little bit of a challenge this week. We are still going to continue to push forward with the implementation of the new pay-by-plate as well as the new machines that we have out there that people are very happy with, who I've spoken to. But we do have a painting, we had a painting plan until the last few weeks, you know, last few weeks have just been wet, wet weather. But the L's and the T-lines that delineate which, where you can park and where you cannot park, they, they are on the, the list that will get done. And it's probably going to be getting done sooner than even, Folk Fest is right around the corner. We're already talking about Folk Fest and making sure that all the crosswalks, but we're going to hit it probably a little bit earlier. And then around Folk Fest, if needed, we'll kind of freshen and freshen it up. So we hear you loud and clear on the L's and the T's. Those are the lines, once again, that delineate where you can park and where you cannot park. Well, I've noticed people are getting a little too close to certain things as well. So we'll make sure that, to take that into consideration around the fire hydrants and the, the 20-foot mark moving around corners. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counsel Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Manager Golden. I know we're talking about the line painting program. So do you know when we're going to start the crosswalks? I know that we had a contract that was supposed to come in and start, and they were going to be done sometime midsummer. But, you know, I'm just wondering when we, because it's starting to get nice out, people are starting to walk. UMass Lowell had went out and painted theirs blue last year, and it didn't even make it three-quarters of a year, and they were wiped out, and they painted them blue again. So I'm just trying to figure out when that date is, starting date is.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That date is, it's still pending. I can shoot something to the council tomorrow. I'll talk to Liz Altman, Ms. Altman that has that. I know that we were just in queue waiting for that to happen. The downtown is going to get hit sooner rather than later. And once again, it's just this weather that we're dealing with. But on the long, on the, the last update, I think, and I'm going to look to Assistant City Manager, I think it was August, we're going to go into, the beginning of August, but I don't want to misspeak.
Ms. Yvani?
Yeah, that is correct. So we're just working on a couple final things, but we have the contract essentially ready to go and are just trying to line up, coordinating overtime and staffing and coverage for that. But it should be good to go.
Did we, did we get an outside contractor on it? Or are we going to do this in-house with overtime? And is it, is it based off the next fiscal year? Obviously, there's 80,000 in next fiscal year's contract. Or is there funding in this contract, I mean, this budget that we're supposed to take to finish it before the July 1st? That, that's really my question is, is the funding there? Or are we waiting for the 80,000 in next year's budget to be released so that you can actually procure the, the contract?
Ms. Yvani?
We have the, the funding. So it's, it's not a for next fiscal year. It was for the fiscal year we're currently in, '23. So we're not having to wait for '24.
So we can't use that mon, money come another 15, 16 days because once July 1st, it goes to another? Or is this capital funding that carries over?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, I believe it was the year before this current year's free cash, there was an appropriation for line painting. So that appropriation, once it's made, does not end at the fiscal year. So it's still good, and, and Ms. Baez Rose can continue her line painting.
So we do have a contract already signed and ready to go. So we're just waiting for dates for a contractor to paint these.
Through Mr. Manager to Yvani. Mr. Manager, you can take that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Yes, that is, excuse me, that has been executed, and we are also moving into three-year contracts. We're looking more towards three-year contracts as, as opposed to the one-year contract. And of course, just for the residents to know, in the event there is a three-year contract, there's always the, the funding piece as at the bottom, you know, the contingency. Correct. Appropriation contingency. So, but we're trying to get away from what we have been doing traditionally as one-year contract every year. We're trying, we're going to try to exercise going into three-year contracts. But once again, the one important piece is the appropriation. It would be contingent upon that money happening. We're trying to avoid the rush. In talking to Ms. Altman over the, our traffic engineer, you know, obviously, those who get in the front of the line get the best times. So that's what we're operating on for your, for fiscal year 2024 forward. Right now, per our last meeting, it should be starting in the beginning of August. However, Consul, we still have our, we have two team members now in our sign line painting shop, and they'll, they'll actively be working and eager to work a little bit of overtime as well on the weekends to try to get that stuff done.
My concern is that when it rains out and we're watching this, they're faded pretty bad. Like if you look at Hadley Park where the kids go out and they skateboard till later times at night, and they, they just walk across those streets over there. It's dark. They're usually in dark clothes. You don't, you can't see anything. So those are my concerns is around the park areas right now and people, the walkability areas to get from like, you look at Middlesex Street, from one side of Middlesex Street to the other so you can walk the river. They're very faded, and you just can't see anything. And you're driving along and you just see this person come walking out. So I just, the rain and darkness is really what the issue is. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on motions on Favor, I post a note, I have it, motions carry. The next motion is 9.14. Counsel Janess request city manager have the proper department present the current financial status of the residential trash hauling contract, including costs and revenues from use of fees, second by Counsel Scott. Counsel Janess?
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments or questions? Hear none on Favor, I post a note, I have it, motions carry. Motion 9.15, we already taken that up earlier. The last motion of the evening is a joint motion by myself and Counsel Mosia, request city manager find ways and means to allow free parking for all combat war veterans and refer motion to veterans agent and parking director. Counsel Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes the best motions that are made are not made by us. They're made by us because of someone else that had that suggestion. So too is this motion here, which came from Colonel Sam Polton. And Mayor Chow and myself were at a Memorial Day event at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and Sam was there playing the taps, and he came over, and he made a very good point when he said, our combat war veterans deserve the best credit of all, and yet, we would be honored if someone would make a motion to have them be available to have free parking. A lot of combat war veterans are disabled. They have placards. They can park wherever they want. But there still are a few that are not disabled, and I feel this is a way to honor the very men and women that went off to war and fought in combat to preserve our rights and freedoms. So having said that, I just would like to refer this to Eric Gitchia, I mean, I'm sorry, Eric Lamash, not Eric, Eric Lamash and Terry Ryan, to see if maybe we could implement this. And the way that you could do that is when someone says that they're a combat war veteran, they show their DD 214, or Eric can look that up. It shows that you're a combat war veteran, and you should be able to get that. I, I don't think it would take away much money from the city, but I thought that would be an honorable motion for our veterans.
Counsel, Counsel Yam, that you have your hands up earlier as well?
The motion is, are we done with the motions?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Yes, I would recommend that, and I would like really support that motion. And I'm hoping that we can do something to honor our veterans. So I appreciate the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could we have a roll call on that just so that when it gets referred, maybe there's strength in numbers and they would both see the department heads that the council supported it?
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions by the council before I do a roll call? Before I do a roll call, I just want to say one quick thing. And Counsel Mosia says it all. You explain it very well. The idea suggestions came from Colonel Sam Polton. And it's really, this is the, the least that, that we can do to honor our combat veterans. They put their, their lives on the line protecting our country. And we want to encourage them to use some of the wonderful things from downtown Lowell as well, as you mentioned, Counsel Mosia, on Memorial Day. They want that many parking spaces, if any, for the attendees and that the park far away from, from the event. And I know that there are the towns and cities and other states that are, are doing this already. So this is, you know, it's a great suggestions by, by the Colonel, and I will be supporting this as well, obviously. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mosia?
Yes.
Counsel Nune?
Yes.
That's eleven yeses.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The, the next line item is executive session, but before we take a vote on it, because we're going to go into executive session and won't be coming back to the chamber, I would like to ask if any member of the council has any announcements. See a lot of hands up. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Former city councillor and current Greater Lowell Technical School Committee member, Curtis Lemay invites the public and also the members of the city council to Franco-American Day flag raising, which will be held- flag raising, which will be held on Saturday, June 24th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Just a reminder, Afro-American Community Collaborative is having their second annual Juneteenth gala. They've been working with City Lowell, Middlesex Community College, amongst other community organizations. That's this Friday night from 7:00 p.m. till midnight at Princeton Station. Tickets are still available and it includes dancing and food as well. So looking forward to that and Juneteenth, there'll be many celebrations throughout the community this upcoming weekend. So come on out. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire council and the administration, we want to wish our clerk, Mr. Michael Gary, a happy, happy birthday.
There we go. That's a happy birthday, Counsel, right now. Counsel Scott.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a point of personal privilege.
Counsel Scott.
So I just wanted to see if there's any way we can look into improvements in conjunction working with LTC to stop the feed from freezing during the meeting. I have friends, neighbors, my mother contacting me saying, I really wish I heard what you just said right now, but I didn't. So I just wanted to see if that's something we could look into. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree. I know that there's a disclaimer at the bottom of the screen that says, due to the recent events, this seems to be going on a lot longer than that and I don't know if this is just like an excuse, but in trying to watch normally city council meetings but other, other boards and commissioners that do meet, you can't get through a single meeting without multiple interruptions. And I know it's caused some serious problems with residents and people that do pay attention. So I don't know what the answer is, but what they have now isn't working. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Well, thank you both for bringing up to our attention. I do have a couple of announcements to make. Now, I'm hesitant because I don't know if the public will hear, but I will say it anyway. I want to congratulate Rick Lovely, the executive director of Greater Merrimack Valley Conventions Bureau and his staff and partners for organizing a very successful annual tourism conference right here in our backyard at the N and Conference Center this morning. The event was attended by myself, the city manager, his staff and the case staff as well. This sort of events usually takes place in or near the Boston area, but Rick was able to bring to Lowell the Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, the State House Joint Committee on Tourism, Arts and Cultural Development Senate and House Chairpersons and their members and all the various partners that make tourism boom. We got a chance to showcase our city in a very special venue. It was very well attended. It's one of the, you know, the event that really have pushed our city forward. So great success. And also want to thank the city manager for helping make everything on the parameter go smooth. I also want to congratulate once again Connor and Francesca. Today at Fort Oaks, there was a luncheon celebrating all the young professionals this afternoon and that was a very, very nice event. Congratulations to both and all to the award winners this afternoon. With that said, let's take up the item on number 10, which is the exec session. And I want to let the public out there know that we are taking recess from the chamber. We will not return to the chamber after the exec session. We're still, I see a signal from the audience. Was there something else, Counselor? So we're going to take a vote to go to exec session and we are going to adjourn from the exec session. We will not return to the chamber. And the purpose of the exec session is to consider and discuss matters of litigation, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Need a motion to enter exec session by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Janess. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Nune.
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Again, we will recess from the chamber. We will adjourn after the exec session. Thank you, everyone, for watching.